Got ready? Okay, good evening, okay. Welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is December 17th, when our seven o'clock sharp, we are starting our meeting right now. Okay, tonight invocation will be led by Reverend Dr. Manson Okubo of the Emmanuel First Lutheran Church of West Covina, followed by pledge of legion led by Councilman Casiano. All rise please.
Thank you Mayor Wu. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, a guardian and keeper of your people. Watch over the members of our city council and protect them. Grant them wisdom and permit them to experience the joys of service to a grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and those who serve. Promote all things for the good of the people of West Covina and may your will be accomplished among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Deputy City Clerk, would you please roll call?
Councilman Casalanos?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Wu?
Here. City Attorney, do you have any information report out?
Nothing to report out, Mr. Mayor, nothing to report out.
Okay, then we have our major tonight have a two presentation. Well, it's sad to say goodbye for 30 years service loyal and very dedicated to her job. Lori, would you please come up? I cannot believe you're so young to be working in the city for 30 years. I've been asking about what kind of feel you have, okay? So you can provide for all the audience including residents over here, but thank you so much for your dedication for 30 years. This exactly, I live in West Covina for 30 years, so today you're working for city, the day I move in, but I don't know if it's a good or bad, okay? But, okay, again, thank you so much for your service and I think not only you're working for the police department, you're working for the fire department too, right? So let's have our police chief and the fire chief come up. Maybe you guys want to say something great and good. I hope so. So I let you start it, okay? Chief?
Perfect, you're gonna give me the mic? All right, how much time do you guys have? Wow, 30 years of service. First of all, I'd like to say thank all of you for being here. Say good evening to you. 30 years of service, I want to say Lori has her husband, her family, both her children are here to support her, but I can honestly tell you that this is a joyous day and a sad day, especially for me. Lori is absolutely a wonderful dispatcher. Matter of fact, can I have her supervisor, Kim, can you just come stand right here with me, please? The reason I have Kim come up here is because, you know, Kim has been with Lori probably as long as anybody, but they work separate from the police department in a different building and no one knows her better than Kim, but there is some things I want to say to you Lori. Let me just tell you a little bit about her. She started in 1990, she got promoted to senior supervisor and, I mean, senior operator and then supervisor, but more importantly, she's a three-time employee of the year for dispatchers. Isn't that wonderful? You know, when I first got here, which was seems like a long time ago, the dispatchers and the police, they didn't do briefings in the same room, so we only knew our dispatchers by voice. And I'm just gonna tell you, she's got a very distinct voice on the radio, and so when you hear it, as many of you, if you called in, you've probably heard her, but you can tell her apart from the rest of them. Very soothing, very calm voice, and I'm just gonna tell you, being a dispatcher, the stress that they're under, the calls that they come in, you couldn't tell that it was an emergency because she's that calm under pressure. This is 30 years of service, this is what you get. I'm just telling you right now that Lori, we are going to miss you. It's a sad day, but a joyous day for you and I want you to really enjoy your retirement. And before I give it over to the chief, if you don't mind, I just want Kim just to say a few words about it because...
Okay. Well Lori and I obviously worked together for 30 years. We, the two of us, Mayor back there is our coworker also, we've been there a little longer than she has, but she's decided to hang up the mic a little earlier than we have. What I would say about Lori, I spoke a lot about her these past couple of days, but the one thing I thought I would hit on tonight, being that there's some citizens here, is Lori, honestly, the one thing we push when new people start in our dispatch center is customer service. And we always, I always say Nordstrom style, if anybody shopped at Nordstrom's, you could retire, return a tire there and they'd be like, okay, we'll take it back. So I always said, you know, you want to be like a Nordstrom customer service, not like Pick 'n Save or, you know, some other lower place. And Lori honestly lives up to that. She's like the one person, honestly, like people call us day to day, not because it's a good day, it's because it's a bad day. So when people call, they're always not so nice sometimes because they're having a bad day. But Lori, honest to God, and I mean this 100%, I've never heard her be anything but nice to everybody. I don't care what they say. A few weeks ago, we had a citizen call and obviously having a really bad day because he called her something really not nice. And so when we all heard that, we're like, oh, like how could they say that against Lori? I mean, it's like, she never ever is, and even after being called not a nice thing, she's like, okay, so we'll get someone over there to help you. So that's the Lori I know and love. I mean, we raised our children together. I'm losing my right hand big time with her retiring, but it is what it is and I'm happy for her, but sad at the same time, as the chief said. That's our Lori and we wish her nothing but the best from myself and from the dispatch.
Well Lori, on behalf of the fire department, we also want to say we're gonna miss your expertise helping out the fire and dealing with us and I know we're more difficult than the police because, you know, our calls are fun or better, but yeah, just lately, especially the last two years, we've been more difficult, right? I've been here two years, so I appreciate you, the fire department definitely appreciate you, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna miss your expertise and your institutional knowledge of the dispatching services West Covina. And on behalf of the fire department, good luck in your retirement and thank you for all your service.
So Larry, Lori, will you change your mind? Will you still want to? Hey, city manager, city manager want to make an offer? Yeah, make an offer, she cannot refuse. But again, thank you so much for 30 years of your service, it's unbelievable dedication and so many nice things about you and okay, I miss your very nice voice, okay? I don't want to call all the time, okay? You say, hey Lori, okay, I have a 911, okay? But anyway, other than that, representing West Covina, our okay, great city and 120,000 population, we appreciate your service and we have a gift for you, okay? We have a beautiful plaque, okay? And see, nobody won't give paper, but for you, we give a plaque, so meaning we really spend the money for you, okay? And not only that, okay, and we are going to give you a street name called Baron Balla. Okay, that you can maybe... Maybe, when you come back to work, you have to return it, okay? But other than that, okay, the Baron Balla, you can hang in front of either police or fire chief, okay? It's up to you, but congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Lori, from the police department, this is a certificate of recognition and, you know, we can put a thousand words on here and it probably won't equal what you mean to us, but there are some things on here that talks about devotion, duty, loyalty and trustworthiness, but most of all, it says we're gonna miss you.
I'm so sorry, okay? She should, she have to say something.
I don't really like this part, but I would just want to say thank you to the staff and citizens of West Covina for allowing me to be part of it for 30 years. It's been awesome. It's been an awesome city to work for. I am so grateful for everything I've learned over the years and the friendships that I've made with my dispatch girls and everybody else in the whole department too. And I'm just so thankful for everything and the outpour of love this past week has been incredible. I mean, they had such a great day for me yesterday, it was insane. So I just want to say thank you to everything and now it's time I spend more time with them, my family and friends. I want to thank you for everything and all of your support all these years and for trying to be accommodating to my crazy schedule and shift work and for having Christmas morning at eight o'clock at night and Thanksgiving dinner on Fridays and our Christmas friends dinner after Christmas. So, and I couldn't have done it without all of you and all of your support and love and I look forward to this next chapter in my life with you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much Lori. Hold you back. See you soon. City manager? We don't want to lose a good hand. Okay, next one, okay, next presentation, okay? West Covina has the most, the best, the shop local after-school program, the after-school program, and I want to thank, okay, the dedication for the director, Taylor, would you come up? And I think everybody know West Covina choir, okay, West Covina High School choir. Okay, has outstanding from this young man, train all this dedication, dedicate student and all the time, okay? And the last year, you guys even get invited to New York, right?
Yeah, two years ago, two years ago, we were invited to sing in Carnegie Hall.
Carnegie Hall in New York, to get invited, yeah. This is how outstanding this group, young people, they are, they were, okay? And the most important thing, it's two years ago, I feel like yesterday, last year, time flew by, but, but the thing is this, we need after-school program, we need, okay, we need this important funding for this, okay? I think the shop local after-school program continue to fund your program for our youngster can continue have all this magnificent program. So maybe you want to say something to encourage more people to sponsor and more people to join your program?
Sure, so we are, we are thrilled to be able to teach the next generation of singer at West Covina High School. The singers who will rise up and take the next spots in the music industry, we have over 130 singers just in our choral department and, and they get to really build on their skills, learn not only the fundamentals, but then take the material and the fundamentals to very, very rigorous levels, whether it be an invitation to Carnegie Hall or invitation to perform with and for other colleges. And so we're thrilled and so, yeah, our students, we tour every year, so we've been to Portland, we've been to New York, we've been kind of just all over the place and so we really look forward to continue building that legacy and training up that next generation of students. I have some students with me, so our president over business is Jolene, so why don't you come on up? And we also have our president over music, Peter. Then we have my student assistant director, Sebastian. And then our West Covina's representative, which is our advanced mixed ensemble, that's Emily. So these are members of our choral department, but these are really some of the singers that are that next generation that we're training up and so we're excited for the prospects that they have ahead of them.
Thank you, okay. You guys want to sing something tonight? No, I know, I know, I know, but, but, but they are really outstanding. Two days ago, three days ago, at the Christmas Children Parade and you guys performed is outstanding. You guys shouldn't miss any time, okay, about their performance, okay? We've been inviting them all the time in different function, okay, because you guys are awesome. I think this is what important for our youth, okay? They have a chance to kind of develop their talent. So not, not only the academic during the, during the daytime, but after hours, after three o'clock to six o'clock, they need to have this after-school activity to make them become very talented, develop your talent, but most important, most important thing is develop your confidence. The confidence is so important for your future and I want to thank you Taylor, okay, the Wiggerworth, right? Mr. Wiggerworth, I've been practicing whole day.
Perfect.
I don't want to say the wrong name, okay? Okay, I know, more difficult, okay? Wiggerworth is much easier, but, but thank you Taylor, Mr. Taylor Wiggerworth for your hardworking and dedication for, to train all these young people, because your dedication, that's why we have this program. So represent West Covina, we have a resolution from five city council, from entire city to have this resolution to recognize outstanding achievement for all of you, but thank you so much for your dedication and contribution for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next way we move to the overall communication of any resident want to address to council, please, okay, fill the yellow card and provide to the deputy city clerk and if you want the city clerk to read for you, just fill the orange one. So on this deputy city clerk, how many we have?
At this time, Mr. Mayor, we only have one yellow card.
Okay, would you please have then to come to the podium?
Certainly, Mr. Herb Redholtz, would you please come forward?
Then, then you go to public hearing, okay? Only, okay, for beside the public hearing agenda, would you please, anybody want to speak? Nope? Okay? Now we move to the consent calendar. Before we start the consent calendar, do we have a, yes, city? Look like you want to say something to me. You smiling and facing your face to me, okay? So anyway, I have a German memory to our beloved, okay, founder of a Porto Bakery, Rosa Porto, okay? And tonight, so Deputy City Clerk, would you please make a mark that I, we're going to in the memory of Rosa Porto? Tonight we adjourn this meeting in honor of Rosa Porto, founder of a Porto Bakery and Cafe, who passed away at the age of 89. According to the family, Rosa began selling homemade baked goods from an underground location when Cuba fell into communism. She continued her passion to sell homemade goods after the family immigrant to the United States in 1971. He went on to open the very first Porto Bakery in Echo Park and later expanded to other locations, including our great city, West Covina. Rosa always brought happiness, great service and fantastic feel to all. Tonight, we remember her and her legacy. Thank you. Any other city council have any German? Nope, okay, thank you. And the city council want to pull any agenda? No? Okay, do I have motion to approve 126?
Make a motion, approve 126.
Do I have a second? So we have a motion by Councilman Lori Johnson and a second by, okay, Councilman Casiano. Do I have any objection? No? So five zero, the motion approved. Let's go to the public hearing number seven and number eight. At the request, we're going to combine number seven and number eight for drawing combination, combine both public hearing. Okay, adopt of California Building and Fire Code and Establishment of a new fine and fee. Okay, the matter set for the public hearing are for the adoption of the 2019 Building Code, 2019 Fire Code and other various code as well as establishment of a new fine and fee, where the deputy city clerk verified the proper legal notice has been given.
Verified.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the code adoption and fee change. There will first be the presentation of a staff report, then we shall hear comment from the public. City manager, who will present the staff report?
Good evening Mayor and Council, the report on these items will be Director Jeff Anderson.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. So yes, we are combining two items, we're combining the building and fire code adoption with the fee schedule. And I'm going to start with the code adoption. So the state of California updates the building and fire codes every three years, was last updated in 2016. Building Division and the fire department are requesting the city council adopt the 2019 edition of the Los Angeles County Building Code and other related codes such as plumbing and electrical and the California Fire Code. The 2019 codes adopted by the state are effective on January 1st, 2020. Because this is an adoption by reference, this is an introduction and the public hearing will occur on January 7th, 2020. So in effect, we're going to have two public hearings on this. Tonight, we're having a public hearing, but the required public hearing will be on January 7th. Cities can amend the California codes due to climatic, geologic and topographical conditions or administrative revisions or reasons. The LA County codes include amendments specific to West Covina. Most of the revisions were previously adopted by the city to earlier coded options and are carried over into the 2019 codes. Among the effective amendments in the LA County codes is an annual cost of living adjustment, allowing fees to be adjusted annually based on the consumer price index. The local amendments that are a continuation or carryover from the previous West Covina code amendments include an administrative changes that relate to issuance of permits, collection of fees, inspections, several other things that you can see there in the first bullet point. Grading code changes that address preparation and submittal of engineering reports requiring inspections and other grading requirements. And then third, the fire code change, changes including the elimination of the previous city amendments that were incorporated into the 2019 Fire Code. The following is a summary of the city's local amendments to the state building and fire codes. The first bullet point, accessory storage sheds on residential properties. Storage sheds no more than one story or 10 feet in height are now exempt from permits. Before that, I don't think there was a height limit, so they've established a height limit. Idle pallets added to address and alleviate potential high hazard fire concerns in commercial and industrial businesses. And then lastly, existing buildings is amended to include their requirement for price, include the requirement for fire sprinklers in existing one and two family dwellings when undergoing major renovations in additions. And in regard to that, we do have our building official, Tony Weimholt, we have our fire chief, Vince Capelli, and we have, we have those two guys to answer any questions, is there questions on specificity of the changes to the building and/or fire code. So now we're going to go to the second part of the hearing, which is the fine and fee schedule background. The city typically updates the fine and fee schedule every year. The last update was in September of 2018. The purpose of a fine and fee schedule is to set the rates that will be charged for services rendered. Lastly, setting an appropriate fee promotes service efficiency and minimizes the burden on the general taxpayer, as well as allows for consideration of appropriate staffing levels for building and engineering services. And I say building and engineering because that's the two sections of the fee reso that we're recommending, or two of the sections we're recommending to be changed tonight. So the first one we want to talk about is the code enforcement fines. We will be increasing, we would recommend those to be increased to be consistent with the fines allowed by state law and the fees be revised by building and engineering divisions to adopt the county schedule of fees. The proposed fees will ensure cost recovery and appropriate staffing levels so that reviews and inspections are completed in a timely manner. Increased funding would allow the ability to increase staffing through consultants for inspections or other services that are necessary. And setting fees to appropriate levels will provide consistency and predictability in the process. Builders and property owners generally want consistency and predictability in the permit and inspection process. So first, the code enforcement fines. The goal of code enforcement is voluntary compliance, not revenue generation, that's important to keep in mind. However, there are instances where we have uncooperative property owners who have a code enforcement violation and there's, it's good to have a fee for non-compliance if necessary. I'm sorry, okay? Is it keep going off? I bore things sometimes, so sorry. On January 1st, 2019, the state changed the maximum allowable charges for code enforcement violations for building and safety code violations. So that was the beginning of this year. Current fines range from $100 to $500 in incremental stages and the proposed fines range from $130 to $1,300. Building. The proposed fee schedule would adopt the LA County Schedule of Fees for Building Fees. It is common for cities to adopt LA County's fees as it provides an easy comparison with LA County costs and allows for an automatic cost of living increase. I'll try to do it every time I talk. Cities that have adopted county fees that are nearby us include Alhambra, which is 1.85 times county fees, Duarte, which is two times county fees, Rosemead is 1.5 times county fees and Temple City at 1.3 times county fees and Whittier at three times county fees. Our proposal is to increase to 1.65 times county fees. The proposed building code amendment would eliminate the current job fee charge that doubles the permit fees for contractors. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. The proposed fee schedule for engineering would adopt the LA County Schedule of Fees for Engineering Fees and/or county time and material for special situations. It is common for cities to adopt the LA County Schedule of Fees as it provides an easy comparison, it's the same, same quote as with the, the building fees. And other cities that use county fees for engineering include Calabasas, Temple City, Whittier and San Gabriel. The building fee schedule reduces the permit fees for small scale projects, including residential electric meter upgrades, water heater replacements and replacement of existing plumbing fixtures. An issuance fee of $36 would be charged, but that would be the total cost for those, those small minor types of fee, permit fees. It would eliminate the job fee, which imposes higher fees on contractors and on owner-builder projects. And the adoption of the new fees will ensure full cost recovery, including administration of those services such as city manager's office, finance and, and city attorney. So in summary, in summary, the building and fire code, we actually have two things that we're doing here tonight, we're, we're suggesting the adoption of the 2019 codes, this will be the introduction of that, there'd be a public hearing on, on January 7th. We're also recommending that you adopt an urgency ordinance that would be effective on January 1st, 2020, to allow us to begin using the California codes as they intend to be used. And so that's the two sections tonight, there's four ordinances before you for that. For fines and fees, we're suggesting adopting a new fine and fee schedule for the code enforcement fees, for building fees and engineering fees, and the new fines and fees are consistent with the San Gabriel Valley market and will assure improved service. That concludes my presentation. I would say, as well as the building official and the fire chief, we have our city engineer here, Mike Ackerman, who can answer questions on the county fees for engineering services.
Okay, thank you Ms. Anderson. And the council have any question? Yeah, go ahead.
Why did we eliminate the job fee?
The job fee... The job fee does something that I don't think that the city should, should be in the business of doing, which it basically encourages people to pull owner-builder permits.
Okay.
So we, and I, and it's, it's funny how we, we work, we have that job fee, and at the same time, we, when they, when they want to submit the owner-builder to save the money, we have them fill out a form and sign it, recognizing what they're agreeing to do, which is take on liability for injuries that happen to any worker on the property. And the general idea of an owner-builder permit is that you're going to do the work. So if you're hiring a contractor, it's a much better idea, and the city's in a much better place if we're encouraging people to hire a contractor to, to, to do the work. And, and way it's set up right now, it's a lot more expensive to hire a contractor. That, that, in my, in my way of thinking, that, that's not a good way of, for the city to be doing business.
But isn't the idea to capture higher fees from builders and contractors the necessarily the one-off builder of their own property or addition onto their own property?
Well, I think that-
There is a big difference between a owner building a house and a contractor building 50 houses. And that's generally why there are higher fees, from what I understand, when it comes to those types of projects.
One thing that you, you may want to do is ask our building official, who's worked in other cities, but I'm not aware that very many cities have this fee. It's kind of a West Covina special. So if other cities, if I had the understanding that other cities had the fee, I, I might not have as much concern, but I, I'm not aware of other cities having this type of fee. I think you're probably correct in the reason that, that the fee was adopted.
That's usually why we have tiered fees for like assessment of fees when they're building properties and the fees that go to school districts, based on who's building. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
So any? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Johnson?
Yeah, on the code enforcement. If someone goes out, a code enforcement officer goes out, there's a violation that's been reported. Now, my question is, is there a fine the first, how long do you give them to repair or take care of the code violation before, or how do you go about giving them the first fine?
Well, you know, that's going to depend a lot on the situation and, and the reaction they get. Again, I want to always emphasize with code enforcement, the goal isn't to get money. The goal is to get compliance. So generally, the code enforcement officer is going to work with the person, and if the person is working towards compliance, they're not going to give them a fine. Once they get obstinate and, and basically refuse, or, you know, have given them chances and then they, they, they haven't ever taken any steps to fix the situation, then that's when you start with a fine. So it's going to depend on the situation.
Do they give them a time limit at first? I'm just saying, what is it if, if, for example, I actually reported there was a motorhome parked halfway on in someone's driveway and on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk, and I reported to the code enforcement. My question is, what time limit do they give them to move that motorhome because you're actually in the public wide right?
Usually they give the, I, I can't, I couldn't answer a question on that, but generally they give them, I, I would say two weeks to 30 days to comply. Now, there's various things. What you're describing is maybe something that's much easier to, to rectify, so they might not give them that much time. But other things that may take longer to rectify. So one of the problems with code enforcement is just such a wide variety of things that occur.
Okay. Counsel, any counsel? Any? So follow up, okay, Councilman Johnson's question. My understanding is, okay, when you see a violation from our co-enforcement team or staff, they will give them a warning. Okay? And after warning, you give them a period of time, maybe a week? Okay? And then you will go back to see, have that been corrected? Okay? If they don't, then you, maybe the second move is you will give them maybe the ticket. Am I right?
You're correct.
So, so you'll, you'll have a warning, and then possible, they will talk to the city and say, why this violation? So not right away, we want to find people, we want to, I think fine is not try to, okay, collect the, the revenue. I think fine is try to have people to correct the wrongdoing. Okay? So, so I think my understanding, when I talk to city manager and our co-enforcement manager, Mylan, is about how to persuade, okay, the resident or homeowner or the business owner how to correct the, the wrong. For example, the trash, the car parking on the lawn, okay, or they park, the car parking on the street forever and ever. Okay? So, or they park a commercial vehicle in the residential area, and they should be removed ASAP, otherwise we should give them the ticket. So, so I think every, the situation is different. So, so, so we, so the, the time period depend on the co-enforcement officer communication with the violator, right? Am I right?
Correct. And I think persuade is a good word.
Yes, exactly. I think we, we try to, because the fine look very deep to me currently based on this change. So we need to maybe notify the people, the fine will be pretty handsome. It's not cheap. So, so we need to, we don't want to make, we don't make sure, we want to correct the situation, not try to, okay, impose the fine. I, I think that is what we try to let the people understand, rather than that we have to kind of clean up all the front yard and to make sure upgrade and sanitation and all those issue. I think that is what the city trying to do. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No, no any other question? So from there, then, Ms. Deputy City Clerk, do you have received any comment concerning what our West Covina Building Code on the change and the fee schedule?
No written comments or protests have been received by the clerk's office at this time.
So in this time, going to open up for the resident to have comment. Anybody want to comment on this issue? Come up. JD?
Well, Mr. Anderson said several times that this is not for revenue generating, revenue. Preceding bullets said that this would pay, help pay for staff, that it would also offset some of the cost recovery, it would be used for cost recovery. So it seems to be a way of incentivizing code enforcers to go out there and maybe capriciously issue out fines. Will there be a, an appeal process that residents can appeal to in the event that they feel that they're being unjustly fined? I hate to sound cynical, but it seems to me that this is more predicated on generating revenue than it is in terms of enforcing the illegal activities that may be taking place in terms of some of the issues mentioned. I say that because currently, we have code enforcers, and we have seen probably in the last 10 years, an exponential growth in illegal dwellings, cars parked in driveway and up in front lawns and left out in the streets. Many residents have come up and complained about motorhomes parked for extended times, and really, no enforcement has taken place. So I would be interested in seeing, seeing what sort of report, what the report would show now that you're going to be issuing fines and fees. Is this going to be driving, like I said, an incentive for the code enforcers to protect their jobs and to increase the city's revenue? Thank you.
Any other resident want to make comment? None?
A point of clarification, Mr. City Manager. These fees are already in place. We're actually updating them. These aren't new schedules, anything like that. There are fees that are currently in place that we are updating and conforming and things that we do on a regular basis when it comes to fees and fines. Correct?
Through the chair. That's exactly correct.
Okay.
This is a update of a fee schedule for fees that are currently charged by the city. If I could speak to the question, which has come up a couple of times. The, the goal of code enforcement is entirely voluntary compliance, and we are in the code compliance business. I don't believe this year, we've levied a single fine, and I see these fines as deterrents and it'd be a last resort. We're always in code enforcement striving for voluntary compliance.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any comment? If not, I'm going to close the public comment. Now I'm going back to the council discussion. So any council want to, okay, okay, Councilman Johnson?
Yes. My question was, Mr. Jeffrey said, do they have an appeal? Do we have an appeal if someone feels that they're being cited unfairly? Do they have an appeal that they can't talk to someone about? Or is it, I'm just curious.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, there's always been an appeal process when receiving a citation. Absolutely.
Go ahead. Okay, Councilman Casiano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to follow up on what Councilmember Shoemaker asked, well, maybe give us a brief history. Have, have we been doing a good job of code enforcement?
Not, not yet. We've just hired a new code enforcement manager, and we'll soon have several part-timers working for him divided geographically around the city. Mr. Murakich, Mylan has been very, very busy in the short time he's been with us. Today, he was sending out literally north of 40 letters. But in each and every case, he's trying for voluntary compliance. I think we're going to see a large increase in terms of public contacts and education about some of these violations, but education is always our, our first approach.
And follow-up question, as far as the costs, there was concern about cost. Are we limited to just cost recovery?
Yes, sir. The, the city in its collection of, of fees, any kind of a fee or charge, is to charge cost reasonably borne in the provision of the service, and that's what we're recommending to you tonight as part of this package.
So generally, not, not a spread to quote-unquote profit?
This is not a, a profit center. We're, we're focused on cost recovery.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Okay. Mayor Proton Lopez Viado?
Actually, I do remember when I was walking during my district, the biggest complaint that I got from most of my residents were code enforcement in regards to the neighbors or things. So there was a lot, and they, they did complain to the city. They tried complying, but a lot of them just didn't care, didn't. So there was no enforcement. So I know majority of the residents would like to see this enforcement occur because that was the biggest complaint that happened. So thank you for this code enforcement. My question is, those who wish to comply and cannot afford it, is, what's the alternatives?
Through the chair. Those that wish to comply, we're going to work with them until they do, and we're going to give time extensions to get compliance, long before we ever get to fines. So we'll give people time, and if they're working with us to correct, then we'll be supportive of that. And fines is an absolute last resort.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Councilman?
And to piggyback on that great question, is the $10,000 loan still available to homeowners?
Yes, CDBG fund.
Yes.
Okay. So that would be a viable option if necessary, they could comply that way, and it's no interest and not due in how many years?
10 years.
10 years? Okay. That's a pretty, pretty good solution. Thank you.
Okay. Follow, okay, Councilman Casiano regarding the, the $10,000, I think we've been talking the CDBG fund, and we have let almost a million dollars, okay, still accumulate. And I need, we need to kind of promote to our resident that we have this $10,000 or I think up to $20,000, right? $10,000 for the upgrade for their home, for their, some of the issue, and they don't have money, they can, okay, and borrow this money and to fix their property. And for a lot of, even including, I think, energy saving and all that kind of thing, improvement. And the second thing I want to follow up, okay, I, okay, Mayor Proton regarding a co-enforcement issue, I think over here, everybody receive, receive all the co-enforcement that resident really want, okay, co-enforcement compared our city and the surrounding city, especially like Warner, why this one street different, they so clean and all the house is, is a manicure, okay? And compared to our, our property, it's kind of, some property is obsolete, okay? Never, ever for our co-enforcement to tell the people, say, would you please clean up your front yard? Okay? And make your house look, look a little bit more presentable and not kind of rusted, all that kind of going on. So I think this is something very important. I think, okay, regarding the, the fines, just a last resort. We say, hey, if you don't do this, we're going to find you. But I think we should spend time to persuade the home, okay, and try to persuade them to do it. But let's go back to another issue, okay, regarding adjustment. I can't understand the adjustment. You remove a lot of, okay, changing the water heaters, okay, replace some of the window or something, that was something very mild, we don't even charge them any application fee. So we want to encourage people, resident, to apply so we can check for them to make sure, okay, everything comply and the no fire hazard or any issue. I think this is something we want to encourage. And the, the issue we have before, we're talking about, we, our application down to 1,300 compared with 3,000 average due to the people just don't apply. So in that way, we need to encourage people to apply, and we need to help them to do it legally so we don't have any hazardous situation. I think this is what the co-enforcement is about. But the, but point is, now we have this well-done contractor, how is their service? Because you raise this fee, and I understand most of the contractors, most of developer, they want the time, the service, they don't care the pay, okay, extra, but they want the time and the precise and more efficient. Do we provide this service if you want to raise this fee?
I'm happy to take that one, and the answer is yes, sir, we do. In our new building and safety contract, we set out performance standards, performance metrics, and we are meeting them in almost every instance. I can tell you, when, when we meet with people that are prospective builders in this city, time is money, and the thing they're most interested in is, is getting it done and getting it done quickly. I'll give you a real-time example from this morning's meeting. We've had a site plan, application, precise plan review filed by Floor and Decor. They want to take over the former Kmart site, and it's zoned for that, and it's an over-the-counter permit. And to them, time is money. So we said, we can expedite building permits. We want to make this happen. We want to be your heroes at City Hall. We want to get you building permits quickly. They were completely supportive, and I don't think the amount of the fees came up even once. They just want to get them done quickly, and that's what we believe we're able to accomplish with this arrangement.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any common question? If not, do, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can we have four separate motions for the ordinances and then a separate motion for the resolution?
Yeah, go ahead.
Deputy City Clerk will read the title for you if you don't want to put that in your motion. Four, and then the resolution will be the fifth.
And then if I may be so bold as to suggest that we possibly take the votes after each individual ordinance is read, that will save all four ordinances being read back-to-back, and for clarification's sake, there won't be any mix-up on the votes as well. Urgency ordinance number 2466 is an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city West Covina, California, amending Articles 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of Chapter 7, adding Articles 19, 20, and 21 to Chapter 7, amending Article 1 of Chapter 9 and Article 2 of Chapter 10 of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference Title 26 Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Building Code, Title 27 Electrical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Electrical Code, Title 30 Residential Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Residential Code, Title 29 Mechanical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Mechanical Code, Title 28 Plumbing Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Plumbing Code, Title 31 Green Building Standards Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, Title 33 Existing Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Existing Building Code and making amendments thereto and amending Article 2 of Chapter 14 of the West Covina Municipal Code to repeal the construction contractor license fee.
Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion for all four ordinances and the resolution.
No, only one. You can do one.
Oh, we're doing one by one?
This is the first one.
Okay.
We do one by one. Just first one.
I'll make a motion for the first ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So first, on the Councilman Casiano, and second by Mayor Proton Lopez Viado. Do I have any objection?
No.
None. So, okay, motion approved, five zero. Do I have a second motion? Second agenda?
So moved?
For the direction of the city attorney, we'd still like to go ahead and take a roll call. If possible.
Okay. Roll call, please.
All right, certainly. Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye. Approve five zero.
All right. Moving on to Urgency Ordinance Number 2468, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Article 2 of Chapter 10 of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2019 California Fire Code, which adopts by reference the 2018 International Fire Code, and making amendments thereto.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Councilman Casiano, and the second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. Do I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Casalanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
And Mayor Wu.
Aye.
Ordinance Number 2463, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Articles 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of Chapter 7, adding Articles 29, 20, I'm sorry, 19, 20, and 21 to Chapter 7, amending Article 1 of Chapter 9 and Article 2 of Chapter 10 of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference Title 26 Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Building Code, Title 27 Electrical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 Los Angeles County Code, oh, I'm sorry, California Electrical Code, Title 30 Residential Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Residential Code, Title 29 Mechanical Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Mechanical Code, Title 28 Plumbing Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Plumbing Code, Title 31 Green Building Standards Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Green Building Standard Code, Title 33 Existing Building Code of the Los Angeles County Code, which adopts by reference the 2019 California Existing Building Code, and making amendments thereto, and amending Article 2 of the Chapter 14 of the West Covina Municipal Code to repeal the construction contractor's license fee.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have an agenda, a motion moved by Councilman Casiano, and the second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Casalanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye.
Ordinance Number 2467, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Article 2 of Chapter 10 of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2019 California Fire Code, which adopts by reference the 2018 International Fire Code, and making amendments thereto.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve number four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Casiano, and second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Casalanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye.
Yes, sir, we need a motion on Resolution 2019-92.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-92.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, so we have, okay, moved by Councilman Casiano, and the second by Councilman Johnson. Roll call, please.
Councilman Casalanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye.
Now, we move on to Agenda Number 9. Okay, this one is about, let me see, public hearing regarding the code amendment Number 19-03 to allow for temporarily non-commercial political sign, and matters said public hearing consists of an amendment to the Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code, okay, related to temporary sign, where the deputy city, let me see, okay, who is going to present this?
This report will be given by Director Jeff Anderson.
Okay, Jeff, please.
Unfortunately, the screen seems to have gone off permanently, but maybe it'll come on here. I'm going to, there's a PowerPoint presentation being passed around, I'm going to go ahead and go through it as if you could see it. Most of this is not very visual, anyway, so. This is a code amendment Number 1903 for temporary non-commercial signs. It's an amendment to Chapter 26, a zoning code of the City of West Covina for temporary non-commercial, in this case, political signs, to be placed in parkways within the public right-of-way. When I say political signs, I think that's part of the emphasis on this, but keep in mind, this is not just about political signs, this is all kinds of temporary non-commercial signs. On April 2nd, 2019, the City Council initiated a code amendment to consider allowing temporary non-commercial signs in the parkway, which is the area between a private property line and the curb or the street. Sometimes there's a sidewalk there, sometimes there's not. The Planning Commission held a study session on July 23rd, 2019, and directed staff to prepare a code amendment, and the Planning Committee, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 26th, 2019, and recommended approval of the code amendment to the City Council. So this amendment was, again, was prepared based on a request by City Council. In summary, the amendments allow for non-commercial signs in the public right-of-way, which we affectionately call the parkway, and in residential, agricultural, and in single-family zones, signs shall not exceed three square feet in area. We did have a, I'm looking at a very nice map of the City of West Covina that shows the zoning, and we're showing that to understand that over 75% of the city is single-family, residential zone, residential of some type or another zoning, so this has an effect on most of the city. The proposed code amendment is exempt from CEQA as a general exemption, and Planning Commission did recommend the adoption of code amendment Number 1903. That concludes the presentation, and be happy to answer any questions.
City Council, do you have any question? Okay, Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
When you say temporary, how long is temporary? I know I read here that there's a days, days to remove it, but it doesn't say how long you can leave it up.
Yeah, temporary is not necessarily defined. A temporary sign, I think by definition, is not a permanent sign, so it's kind of based on the materials that it's made of, and generally temporary signs are banners that are vinyl or, you know, paper, like glossed paper. And there is an existing section in the code that says temporary non-commercial signs shall be removed within 10 days after the event which they're advertising, so that's in the code now, it's not under discussion here, but that, I think that's basically the definition of temporary.
Everybody's definition of temporary is different, so one person could be one day, another person could be a whole year, but it's temporary, so.
That is correct.
That's why I asked.
And that's part, that's part of the difficulty in trying to regulate this type of signage.
Councilman Casiano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What kind of burden might this place on city workers if, in terms of maintaining the parkways, if, you know, people catch on to this and really like placing temporary signs? Would that present a problem to our city staff?
Well, I did speak with our code enforcement officer today, and he commented that, yes, it would probably increase the amount of calls they get, the concerns that happen. I understand that a thing like a parkway is kind of an unusual circumstance. The parkway is owned by the city, but generally taken care of by the property owner that's in front of, so then, you know, if signs are put there, who has the ability to tell them they can't be there, they can be there? Somebody's maintaining the yard and takes them down, can the person who put them up there complain? So these are the type of things that, that I was told by the code enforcement officer that he's experienced in his career with this type of signage.
Any other?
In regards to signage, is there limited signage that can be placed? Otherwise, I don't want to see the whole city be cluttered with so many signs.
I'm looking at the code amendment right now, we don't have it, they have, the size of the sign is defined, but not necessarily the number of signs.
What about the message? It's not limited to political, could it be any of the above, religious, just anything anyone could dream up?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we're not going to regulate the content of it, we're not going to call it a political sign, it's just a non-commercial sign.
I think we wanted samples, like what kind of signs?
Yeah, generally, generally it is. Vote, vote for, vote for Mayor Tony Wu, as an example. Yes, 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 but, yes, not anything non, anything that is not commercial.
So if it.
It could be, it could be a religious comment.
Could be.
It could be smile, have a nice day, could be any message, it's non-commercial.
Could be crosstown, high school football rivalry, they want to do something funny.
Sure.
Okay.
It could be something about global warming, or about right-to-life, any message, yes.
Okay, I want to understand the amendment, the change, because my understanding before last year, okay, and that we only allowed the sign in front of private property, so now we want to change to what? To allow to the, in the public way?
So, in the parkway, the area, Mayor Wu, in the area between the front of the property line and the street, which is called the parkway or the right-of-way, it's, people call it various things.
Yeah, I saw it, okay, I, last year, I went through it, okay, but, okay, I think it's difficult to see this is belong to the homeowner or the public, so, so people just putting the sign possible without, okay, the agreement of the owner, because my understanding, the ordinance we approved before is, we must have the, okay, property owner consent, okay, to put the sign, okay, in front of their yard. So in the last year, we kind of much cleaner than previous, okay, election. So my understanding is, now we want to allow the, what, the right-of-way, okay, in front of the sidewalk, that possible can put, okay, a yard sign, can be any yard sign beside the political, so I don't know, okay, is that what the proposal trying to?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Yes, I guess we can do it after we close, we have discussion, but that would be good.
Yeah, ask a question.
I already know what I want to add, we discuss.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I just remember, some people actually would put their sign in between two homeowners' property, like right in the middle, and I remember, I said, oh, great, you know, you're supporting this person, and goes, oh, no, I think that's the neighbor's, and then go to the neighbor's, and they said, oh, no, I thought it was the other neighbor's. So there were a lot of people just putting signs everywhere, and then homes that had cinder blocks, if they had cinder blocks on one end, there's one like on Merced, they just placed it there, and so it was just, I know there was a bunch of clutter on areas where they did not have the approval of the homeowners, and so I just, and then there were certain parts that just over-bombarde, just way too many, so it was just something that I recalled, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
In a situation where somebody puts something on a cinder block wall belonging to a property, doesn't that property owner have the right to remove it? You mentioned cinder block. And if it's on the parkways in front of somebody's property, do they have the right to remove it since they maintain them? Anybody?
That, well, that's the, it doesn't seem like it. I think that's part of our concern, is that people may, I mean, if I'm mowing my yard and there's something there, I'm probably going to pick it up, I don't know if I'll put it back or not, but, you know, it's not really my property, that area, so it's a, it's an open question and would, could be a cause for debate.
Can we put in, since people maintain those areas, that they can remove them? And then the other one was, Ms., Mayor Protem Lopez Viado brought up a very good point, because the ordinance as it stands states that you have to remove them within 10 days of the event, which we understand if it's a political sign, within 10 days of the election. For general temporary signs that may not have an expiration date attached to it, can we put a limit on how long they can be up there, above and beyond just saying when they disintegrate?
I'm going to say we may need some more work on this ordinance. Perhaps we can do that, but we'd have to work with the city attorney to try and craft some language that would achieve your direction there. In this case, the property owner is the city, and so by allowing these signs in the public right-of-way, we've really created a new precedent here which is untested, and I'm predicting we're not going to like it. But let's maybe harvest your criticisms tonight and refer back, and we'll work with the city attorney to perhaps revise this ordinance in a way that it meets your desires.
Any other comment? If none, I'm going to, okay, starting with deputy city clerk, okay, have you received any comment concerning the code amendment of the Number 19-03?
We have received no criticisms or comments.
Okay, so none. So I'm going to open the public comments, so do I have any resident want to talk? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, good evening, everybody. A question just came into my mind, too, and it, maybe it's kind of related to what we've been discussing here, but since the parkway is city property, public property, could anyone just come along and plant signs? I mean, what if, you know, I'm supporting, you know, a particular, you know, someone running for council, and the other guy comes along and plants his sign? You know, I mean, I agree with the city attorney, this needs work, because we're going to have chaos. You know, you're going to be driving along and, oh, why are you supporting that guy? I'm not. I could just see this being a bad, real bad. So I think we need to look at it and get all the Ts crossed and Is dotted quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Jerry? Take your time.
Gary Patras. Mine is more lighthearted but serious. Signs for lost animals. To me, I respond to them, I walk, I look at them, and I keep an eye out. I know they're not supposed to be on telephone poles and light poles and stuff, but when you do the sign, would you kind of recognize that we're going to do that anyway? People do it. I put free limes, free this or that in my technical parkway things, so I actually think that there is some work that needs to be done, but the animal ones, I mean, really just tear at my heart. So if there's some way you can work something like that, then I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next.
And after being involved in political campaigns in the city for about 20 years, it wasn't until this ordinance changed to seem there was a problem. You know, when, when it first came up, I made the remark that it was the, the attempt for the incumbent guaranteed reelection thing. Turned out, some of the people who supported it weren't reelected. So what it comes down to is, I have a question. That public right-of-way, if the grass grows this high because the city owns it, is the city going to come mow it, or do I have to? If I have to maintain it, it seems pretty simple to say, I can, I at least can control some of it, the usage of it, if I have to maintain it, because what if somebody decides to park an old junky car on it? Who's going to, who is going to call and say, take this away, because it's on city property? So I think, you know, that we're trying to make things a little too difficult, you know, when you can just look at, if I maintain it, you put a sign there, I'm going to throw it away if I don't support that person. You know, I remember in the last campaign, putting out signs for people, and, you know, people said, you know, put it there, because you want to, you want to set the signs up where people can see them. The city was going along yanking them out, and people were going, but that's my property. I mean, I remember in the past, when these things came up, it was saying, yeah, technically it's not the person's property, and city staff would say, technically, it's not city's property, but are you going to go tell somebody that they can't pull that sign? go tell somebody that they can't pull that sign? You know, that sort of thing. And this came up when, you know, I, I remember a former one-term council member who was the prime offender for doing things like that, finding, you know, a woman who was 75 years old and putting a sign, and, you know, you'd knock on their door and be talking to them, go, well, I don't support that person, why'd they put a sign there? Said, pull it. Oh, okay, you know? And people would get up in front of the council, you know, that's nice when you've been around here 20, 25 years, you remember these little things. But I think we're trying to make something a little bit more difficult than, than it needs to be. You know, what about this, what about that? You know, in the past, the ordinance was simple, from this date to this date, were political signs. If you were doing signs for a yard sale, it was so much before, and, you know, until the, the yard sale, whatever the case may be. You know, and it seemed to have worked for years and years and years. You're not going to get all of them, you know? People lose a dog, or a cat, or whatever, and they want, want to put a sign out. Well, you know, most of the time, they're not making plastic signs that are going to last for the next 20 years. So it's going to evaporate, and people come along and pick them up, and pick them up anyway. So, you know, I think we just need to look at things realistically and be a little bit more, you know, let's, we're not going to cover every instance of everything under the sun, but, you know, just being a little realistic and looking at what we had in the past, and just kind of going back to most of that. You know, and in most cases, people aren't going to get too carried, too carried away and put things out. If they're, you know, referencing a church service, well, you know, they're going to reference a church service. And usually, you know, it's not going to be out there forever and ever and ever. And you're always going to have somebody who, you can't make a rule for somebody who's going to violate it. Because a lot of these sign ordinances, anyway, the biggest violations were the people who put them in place would violate them the most. You know, so, you know, it's, it's like anything, it's not, it's not the rule, it's not the process, it's not the procedure, it's the people and their integrity and their ethics, is what it comes down to. So I just go back to what we had in the past, start there, and work your way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have any? Yep, go ahead.
How you doing? I actually wanted to agree with this gentleman, right? Because where I live, there is no sidewalk, so it's basically, my grass goes right up to the curb, and then that's where the street's at. There's a maple tree, I think, maybe a few feet from there, that apparently belongs to the city. They're supposed to maintain it. It's not. It's actually the ugliest tree on the street, even though I have a beautiful house, a beautiful house with 52 palm trees, and there's this one maple tree that's just never kept up, right? So I just got to believe, and then I asked, hey, can I remove it? But they said, no, if you remove it, you're going to find. So I said, okay. So I have to maintain it, I have to pay someone, every month, someone has to come down, you know, cut the grass, that's technically not my part, right, that's right around the tree. So I figured if someone were to come and put up a, a sign on my, on my grass, which I technically, it's like my grass right there, I live at the end of a cul-de-sac, right? So, you know, I'd probably remove it. Because I think, like, you know, especially if it was someone that I wasn't, let's say, a political sign that I wasn't maybe in tune to, but I think you had said earlier, or someone over here had said earlier, if it wasn't a political sign, and it could be, you know, just have a nice day, or, or have a bad day, I don't know, you know, whatever it was, right? I mean, who's to determine, I think you had said, what determines temporary? So does that mean that if I don't remove it, I have to see that sign every time I come out of my house for who knows how long? I mean, so I, you know, so that, that, that has to be something that I think that, you know, and, and I mean, there's no criticism here, I know everybody's trying to figure out how to, you know, put these rules in place, but there should be some consideration into that. Someone shouldn't be able to just go up there and just put signs, you know, and, and be able to leave it there for the, any, you know, any ridiculous length of time. So that, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, next, JD.
Fees and fines, I imagine it's connected to this, if not now, somewhere in the future. Away from my public easement, my personal public easement, the park area, signs that get hung up there, who's responsible for those signs when they're left there temporarily? Six months later, not even that long, three weeks later, they're on the floor, blowing into my yard, into the curbside. The city doesn't take responsibility for those, but yet you want to seem to control public easement adjacent to my property, whether someone can place a sign there or not. Homeowners take the responsibility of either coming afterwards and picking them up, or just outright removing them. I remove them. But the city doesn't do that in its own public walkway. So, and I think that's a failure on the city's part. We know that there was a contract once upon a time where they would go out and pick up these numerous garage sale signs that get posted. Used to be weekends, now it's Sunday to Monday, right? That contract was not renewed consequently. We have tremendous amount of trash that gets left hung up on public easement, that is poles, light poles, hammered into the park palm trees, into the very front of my neighbor's homes, because she happens to have two public palm trees of the many that line Lark Allen. And as the previous speaker said, that's, that's an ugly thing to have to come out every morning and look at, somebody's signway, signage. But the city does, is not helping in that area. So I think before you decide whether it should be in my public easement or not, you should probably look into your own home, your own house, that is, the park and the areas that you have full control of, and maybe develop some sort of method of cleaning that up before trying to tell the residents what should or should not go on their property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other resident want to make comment? But now I'm going to close the public comment, and then we're going to bring back to the council discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm all for this, being able to put signs out there, and right in front of the little walkway there. I wanted this to happen sometime back, we brought it forward, because, I remember a few years ago, I do recall, at one time, I even had council maker, council member Shoemaker, it was one of her signs when she was running for school board, in front of my house on the, the walkway. I had one of council, of Mayor Tony Wu's sign in my yard, because he was that large. No, but I'm just saying, what I'm saying, I did have your sign out there. Nobody put any signs in front of my house that I didn't want there. If they were to, I would have taken them down, which I would expect that if I put one of my signs in front of someone else's house, that way, they have the right. Now, we have to understand, a lot of residents, they have block walls, wrought iron fences. If it's just behind there, you're not going to see them sometimes, because they're, they're not out where people can see them, and it does hide them. So I do believe that this has been going on for many, many years. We just changed it a few years back, which it should have never been changed, but it was. So I, I believe that the right thing to do is for us to discuss it and move forward with it, and I, I'd like to see it to go back, where you're allowed to put them out there, because like it says, like Mr. Shoemaker said, we have to maintain that little piece of property in front of our house. If the grass grows six feet, code people are going to come out and say, we have to mow it. Because that is, even though it belongs to the city, we, as a property owner, we have to maintain it. So that's telling us that we have the right to do what we have to do on our property. I do not have sidewalks on my street. So I do have a block wall there, but I don't have, so it does separate it. But my, my block wall is 10 feet back from the curb. So I do maintain the front yard of, in front of it. If somebody comes and puts a, I'm going to tell you right now, if somebody puts a sign in there, it's not staying. Because I don't want somebody putting something in front of my, my house that I'm not aligned with. And I don't think anyone should have that right to do it. I don't think any council member up here, or anybody should say, you know what, I'm not aligned with that, I do not believe in that. If it's a religious saying that you don't believe in, why would you want that in front of your house? And so I'm just saying, so I think that we have to look at it, and I, I would like to see us move forward with it. If it wants to come back at a certain time, that's, I'm for that. But I think, you know, it's the right thing to do, is to give the property owner the right to say, yes, between your property right there and this, and the curb, we should have the right to put a, a political sign there, if that, or a temporary sign, if anyone says. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Any other council, council discussion? Anyone to say anything? None? Okay, I, I want to follow, okay, Councilman Johnson regarding, okay, and the right-of-way. And, and, yeah, you're talking about, okay, you put my sign back in 2015, but that time, we didn't pass the new ordinance, okay, and that is approved by us, okay, I think in 2017, right? We approve that we do not allow, okay, and have the sign all the places in the public area, okay, and including, okay, telephone pole and this and that, because we saw in 2015, we see the signs, like, all the places. And then, and I think that's why, okay, we approved the new ordinance, is only allow private property, okay, to put a sign in, in front of their front yard, must have the concern of the resident. And at same time, and the last year, when I, when we have the election, we, we saw, okay, much more cleaner city than before, with, on the street, we're not crowded with sign, like, hundreds of sign and this and that. And speaking truth, save a lot of money for the, for all those, okay, and candidate, okay, don't have to put a sign on the street, speaking truth, it doesn't even work. So what I'm saying is, look, obviously, it looked much cleaner, okay? Only allow the people that support you, the private property, put a sign, okay, it's the freedom of, the freedom of speech, rather than put it in the public area, it's not really, they don't vote. The people vote for you, it's the, it's a, the person on the property and wishes to, to vote. And then regarding the right-of-way, that is kind of vague, okay, that should we allow, okay, and last year, when I was still knocking, I see a lot of right-of-way, and people have block wall, I don't even feel, okay, want to put a sign, because I think that's belong to the, okay, city, okay, and the street, okay, city, city property, okay? And then if I can put over there, all the people maybe will put over there, too. So, so in that way, I just give up, okay, and even they want to support me. But, but the point is, okay, some of the residents is correct, okay? Okay, some of the, this right-of-way, and the, the tree we planted, and the tree's dead, okay, or tree's overgrown, why the city didn't go back to clean it? And because when I asked the resident, they say, nope, that is belong to, to the city. So city need to clean it, they refuse to do anything. Okay, so in that way, we need to define who owned, who maintains that right-of-way. If we owned it, the city owned it, the city have to maintain it, city have to clean it, city have to clean the tree, we planted a tree, and the tree dead, we have to remove it. Otherwise, it look horrible over there, and it doesn't even do anything. But in that way, since last year, okay, we see much cleaner, okay, of the street, of the city, I really have a hard time to support, okay, to put this sign, because we might open the car or warm, that, that might be have all the thing, okay, they want to put all the places, because it's a right-of-way, and they do not even have the people's, okay, of a concern. Because most of people thinking about that belong to the public, to the, belong to the city, so they won't say anything. So in that way, we are crowded again, go back, went back, go back to before. So, so what we're trying to do is, is a clean city, okay? We try to do the improvement, and we did it in, back in 2017. I think we should continue, follow that, because last year, if it worked fine, I think it will work fine next year. So I, I really cannot support this, okay, yeah, and because I, I see the result last year is much cleaner, okay, a lot of people much happier about, okay, the city look like, not crowded with all this political sign, especially, we have a major election coming up, 2020, okay, you're going to see a lot of sign, and then, and I think that will make a lot of residents not too happy about that. And plus, coenforcement need to go to enforce regarding all those sign, garage, this and that, that need to be removed, and that need to be cleaned up. Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Shoemaker?
I've run in four campaigns myself. My dad ran three times. And never did I run across the problem of putting my signs on somebody's private property without their permission. You just don't do that. And as someone who is well aware that the property owners maintain their parkway, I would never put a sign in somebody's parkway that wouldn't allow it. I don't think the general public is aware that the parkways are city property. They consider it the house that is in front of's property. This proposed amendment isn't allowing signs to go back up on post, it's not allowing it to go back on the sidewalks along Azusa, where you would have a sign in every tree well. This is talking about property in front of somebody's house. You know, a lot of people come up here and accuse us of wanting to stifle the First Amendment. You know, political speech should be allowed and be visible in this city, besides the fact that this, we're focused on political signs here, but this is for temporary signs in general. So if somebody is maintaining their property, and that's why I've brought up, we need to address that people will be allowed to remove signs from there, if they're required to maintain it, they should be allowed to remove it. I, I don't see an issue here. Quite frankly, anywhere my political signs were, I had permission from a homeowner before this last election. All that happened is, it was cleaner, because you couldn't see the signs, because they were by people's front doors instead. Where before, I may have had one sign on the street, because it was on the street where you can see it, instead, I had to have 10, so everybody, you know, hopefully you'll see one by somebody's front door, or further back on the walkway. I don't think it made our city better. I think it made our city look like we had no interest in elections going on. And so I have no problem with allowing people who maintain those properties to put a sign up. We already have in place where if it has a date, it has to be removed within the 10 days, and add another line somewhere that deals with signs that do not have a date on them. So that's how I would support this. And I do have a question for the city attorney. This says, delay for the reading, is it possible to approve this at, just the first reading, and have it come back for a second reading with proposed amendments?
And do you want to amend the point you just said?
I will move to approve this for first reading, and secondly, that when it come back for second reading, the ordinance be amended to state that if the property owner maintains it, somehow you're going to have to figure out how we can work that, that they have control over what signs go there. And that we had ad language about temporary signs that don't have a date, how long they can be in place.
You understand her motion? You got it? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to hear from our city attorney, how do you feel about this? I mean, would this potentially open us up to any kind of liability? Cause unforeseen problems, especially with code enforcement?
Yeah, there, Mr. Mayor, legally, you're, you're not regulating the content of this sign, so legally, you're, you're fine, you're, you're saying it's a temporary sign, I think we talk about material and size, that's okay, you can, time, place, and manner, that's okay to do. Non-legal issues, I won't, I won't want to speak to, but code enforcement, I think you heard from the public, and you've heard from your fellow council members, that there could be a number of signs, there could be blocking, or, or they could be in the, put in front of someone's house without their permission, that could, you could run into some issue, you get code enforcement calls, you could have some issues there. But legally, you're not regulating the content, it's non-commercial, it's temporary, we can clean up the definition of temporary for you, and then we can talk about the property owner controlling and maintaining that parkway. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, do we have any other comment discussion? Otherwise, have a roll call, please.
Part of the roll call, if I could please read the ordinance title into the record, that being ordinance number 2464, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending sections 26 dash 312 and 26 dash 314 of the West Covina Municipal Code to allow certain temporary, non-commercial signs to be placed in the parkways within municipal rights of way. We have a motion by Councilmember Shoemaker, and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Councilman Casalanos?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Lopez Viado?
No.
Mayor Wu?
Nope. Okay, the motion failed, okay, is 3-2. Okay, and then we move to agenda number 10. Okay, the public hearing regarding the co-amendment number, okay, 19 dash 06, regarding accessory drilling unit and junior accessory drilling unit. Okay, the matter set for the hearing by the council consists of an urgent ordinance to authorize, okay, as accessory drilling unit and the junior accessory drilling unit consists with the state law.
with the state law requirement by amend, amending the portion of chapter 26 of the municipal code, where the deputy city, no, hold on, okay, let have, okay, our, okay, city manager, who is going to present this?
Mayor, this will be presented by Director Jeff Anderson.
Jeff, please.
The PowerPoint has gone defunct, so I'll be providing you the information. Again, there's no visual on this very much, anyway. This is a code amendment 1906 for accessory dwelling units, which those of you who've been around for the last few years know, we seem to have to go through this process about once a year. This year, the state passed several legislations late in the year, in October, and there was, or September, assigned in October by the governor. So four bills basically that were adopted, SB 13, AB 68, AB 670, and AB 881. The people who wrote those didn't seem to consult with one another, so they're not, they're, they're not, they don't edge match each other, there, there's some issues. So the legislation is ambiguous, and the city's attorney's office and staff did their best to interpret and get something on the books before January 1st. That was our goal, to get something on the books by January 1st. When I say something on the book, something that's compliant with state law on the books. So we prepared an urgency ordinance that would take effect on January 1st, and the Planning Commission initiated code amendment on November 26th to allow this process to, to go forward. Following the urgency ordinance that you're looking at tonight, we will go through a normal code amendment process, so there will be a little bit, I'm going to use the word leisurely, I don't mean it's going to take a long time, but we're going to take some time to look at things, to, to look at the code, to go back and look at the standards, maybe, I think the city attorney's office will be looking at what other cities might be, how they have interpreted HCD, the, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which we call HCD, has some authority over this, and they'll also probably be making some decisions and providing some direction as well. So there's several things that we're gonna, are gonna happen over the next few months, in the next year, that are probably influence us to make some decisions on what is in, ends up being in the ordinance. So I wanted to put that up, up front, that while we adopt something tonight, it's not necessarily going to be the end of, of our, our review or, or consideration. So AB 68, I'm going to cover these each individually, AB 68, very quickly, requires cities allow what's called a junior accessory dwelling unit, JDU. JDU is an accessory dwelling unit that is built within a single-family residential structure, and is no more than 500 square feet, it must have kitchen facilities, but it could share the bathroom. So that was something that we had before, but we chose not to initiate that, so it's not in our code now. In JDUs, the owner must reside in the primary unit or the JDU, and currently, we don't have any of those in our, in our code. Secondly, we have AB 881, which is a bit longer and has more standards. ADUs must be allowed in all residential zones, and in certain circumstances, also allowed in mixed-use zones. When I say all residential zones, I mean also higher residential, multi-family residential zones, not just single-family residential zones. All ADUs as well as JDUs must be approved within 60 days if they meet standards. The grounds on which ADUs may be denied are now limited to water, sewer, traffic flow, and public safety. Cities may no longer have minimum lot size for, for lots on which ADUs are allowed, and the law provides that ADUs must be allowed within a proposed or existing primary dwelling, and in a detached, or in a detached structure. The difference between an interior ADU and a JDU is the size and whether to include a bathroom. So as you can, so 881 continued, cities may only require a four-foot side yard or rear yard setback. No setbacks may be required if the ADU is being converted from an, a constructed, something that's constructed in the same location, and including, and includes garages. So garage conversions are mandatory, and no replacement garage can be required. Cities can no longer impose an owner occupancy requirement for ADUs through 2025, and this requirement may not be imposed on any units approved during that time. I don't know what happens in 2025, we'll wait and see.
It expires.
It expires, but I don't know what the legislature will do, I don't. For attached ADUs, cities may establish, establish a maximum square footage requirement of 850 square feet for a studio and 100, and one-bedroom units, and 1,000 square feet for one bedroom or 50% of the primary dwelling, that's for attached structures. For detached, the maximum square footage is 1,200 square feet. So then SB 13, owners with ADUs with building code violations can seek to defer corrections if it is not a matter of health and safety, and it applies to ADUs built prior to January 1st, 2020. And then AB 670, this section provides that CCNRs for lots zoned for single-family residential use may not prohibit or unreasonably restrict construction of ADUs or JDUs. So basically, what that means is that the CC, you can't use CCNRs, homeowners association can't use CCNRs to fight someone converting their garage or constructing an accessory dwelling unit. So in, in, in effect, every lot in the city can now have a primary dwelling, a, a ADU, and a JDU. There's a lot of editorial comments I'd like to make at this time, but I'm going to refrain. Following the adoption of the urgency ordinance, staff will draft a complete set of zoning standards consistent with state law, where there's room for local control. So we're going to be looking for situations where there's local control, and we'll, we'll be talking to the Planning Commission about those and trying to institute what we can. Staff proposes a, a Planning Commission study session, followed by a Planning Commission hearing, and ultimately by a city council hearing, which is our normal process, we, what we just talked about with the temporary sign, this is the same process that went through. The proposed code amendment is exempt from CEQA as a general exemption, and the city council, we're recommending that the city council adopt the urgency ordinance allowing the state mandated standards to be in place on January 1st, 2020. That concludes staff's presentation. We'd be overjoyed to answer any questions.
So council, any question? No question? Okay, okay, no question, so we are going to, okay, where the deputy city clerk verified that, okay, a proper legal notice has been given?
Verified.
Okay, now I'm going to open, okay, basically, the public comment, anybody want to say anything? Okay, go ahead, Herb.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, staff. Herb Redholtz, resident and chairman of your planning commission. I'm not happy. I'm not happy at all. The state of California has taken the ability of West Covina and every other city in this state to have the kind of neighborhoods we want to have. It's gone. I'm mad about that. We no longer have single-family zoning, really, in, not in effect, in fact, we no longer have single-family zoning. I'm upset with our local legislators, some of which served on city councils, that all voted for this. These bills were introduced by Northern California legislators. I'm, I'm kind of upset with the League of California Cities. I'm upset with, I mean, where, where, where was the notice on this? Where, this just hit everybody, nobody even saw this coming. Well, glad you saw it coming. You know, we, we realize that there's an issue with affordable housing, we get that, okay? But where is the opportunity to, to work with the state to mitigate these issues and come up with solutions? We never had that. They just threw the baby out with the bathwater, not happy. And I'll tell you something, this would have been somewhat more palatable if they had left the owner occupied provision in there. At least the owner's got to be somewhere on the property, but no, they threw that out too. So guess what? You have a statewide spec market. That's what you've got. You've got developers, you know, you know, speculators, whatever you want to call them, that are going to come in and buy houses, and buy property, and you have no, you have minimum to no setbacks, you have no minimum lot requirement anymore, the owner doesn't have to be there, these spec people are going to come in here, they don't care about West Covina, they're just here to, you know, to make a buck. That's great, but it's going to be on, at the expense of our cities. You know, for years on the Planning Commission, most of us who sit on that side on the Planning Commission, we're concerned about maintaining the character and integrity of our neighborhoods. That's, that's job one. It's gone. It's completely gone. This, I don't know if the people realize how, what a, what a dramatic and horrible effect this could have, not only on West Covina, but on every city. Single-family housing, what the heck is that? Now, we, we didn't allow the JDUs, good God, now we're going to have 500-foot apartments built onto our homes. I'm mad, not happy. I don't, you know, it's an urgency thing, they just rammed it down our throats, and these are legislators that I've supported, and I ain't happy with them. My people, they're my people, and I'm upset, almost said pissed, I'm upset with these people. This is terrible. Now, what can we do about it? I don't know, but Pasadena, at their last council meeting, they were not happy, and they want to take action, they want to take legal action against the city. Now, against, oh God, thank you, against the state, they want to take action against the state, and they're looking into what they can do. You know, the word is, this is bulletproof. If you try and go against them, they're going to come back with you, you know, with the full force of the state. But let me tell you something, there is strength in numbers. I think it is, behooves this city to talk to other cities, I don't think anybody's thrilled about this, and see what we can do. Unlike districting, where we folded up our tents and ran off, this is a fight that needs to be fought. This is terrible, it's devastating, and for us to, to just, you know, twiddle our thumbs and accept it is a big mistake. We have to talk to other cities, get together, and find out what we can do to fight this. This is devastating. We're going to take it up on the, on the Planning Commission in the next couple of months. It's, it's ugly, it's ugly. I'm sorry to see this happen, I'm disappointed with the legislators, I'm disappointed with the, with the governor, I'm disappointed with the fact this happened in September, and bam, October, it's the law, really? With no, no, I mean, I, I didn't know about it, you know, I was so upset, I, I called Jeff, I said, I got to talk to you, but before it comes in front of us, I got to talk to you about this, what the heck is this? This is terrible. I got 20 seconds, how much more time can I vent? 18 seconds. Anyway, you guys know, this is bad, we, I know, I know, I need more time, but we got to do something, we got to fight this, we got to fight this, we got to be on the same side, on the same team, and do what we can to fight this. Put on your boxing gloves and let's go, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yeah, come?
I think Huntington Beach tried to fight it, we don't know how that turned out, right? We did know this was going to happen, it's happened in 2017, right, and it was only for a year, and we didn't know back then, and the city came and made a lot of changes, and I actually would have liked to have been participating in that program and wasn't able to, because you guys changed it. You know, so, you know, there are people that are moving out of the city, people that are moving out of the state, because people can't afford to live here anymore. Now, how many people actually did ADUs in 2017? I mean, how many? How many are going to do them today? At least they'll do them legally, because I know a whole hell of a lot of them that are illegal, where people are living in places you guys don't even know about it, code enforcement doesn't even know about it. Hopefully, this law, when it passes in January, right, it'll get those people to come back and do it legally, so people can live in actually, you know, in, in, in places where, you know, they're not in danger, you know, so I, I'm, I'm going to cut it short, I'm not going to take four minutes, I'm for it.
I suppose, I'll be real brief, but I suppose you're going to have to go around and strip all that red paint off of curbsides, because there's going to be nowhere to park for all these folks. And I don't get it, so you adopted an ordinance in the county that will fine me for violations, electrical, windows, and what have you, but if I heard correctly, these folks get a pass on these granny flats to some extent? That inconsistency is too prevalent among government. And I think the Planning Commissioner said, I think this would be the first time, because I've never seen this joint cities come together and fight Sacramento. But at some point in time, if the cities don't, then we might as well do away with the city and just follow the direction of the state. I really hope that something's done, and like the previous speaker, though he seems to be advocating for it, there are quite a few illegal conversions already, and I still believe that you need to be held accountable with your enforcement, code enforcement to do something about that. It may be too late now, because these, these new rules seem to protect those sort of conversions, and if they're not legal today, I guess come January 1st, they will be. So maybe a little too late, but I don't ignore the fact that you've had code enforcement, these illegal conversions have been growing, so you've kind of been a part of rolling out this very legislature, okay? Legislature.
Thank you, JD. And any other comment? Jerry, why not? Hey, Merry Christmas.
And Happy New Year's, next. I actually would like to just take a second and thank Jeff Anderson for the way he's handled this. I too am bothered by it, because the city is going to change. I've left areas, I don't want to live in downtown LA purposely, I wanted to live in the suburbs, and I'm going to now live in downtown LA mini version, and it's happening. I would much rather have local control, and that's the real issue. It's local control. The state has taken away, and they do it on this, then I'll do it on the next thing and the next thing. I agree with Herb, cities should get banned together and pushed back, because it is a local control issue, it's not going to solve the housing thing, but let people think it will. I sent a request or a concern I had, that I had heard on rumors on these ADUs, that people could start adding second stories to their garage, and I'm in my backyard thinking, aye, yai, my elevation is lower than the street behind me, and, you know, I'm thinking I'm going to be really claustrophobic. He did a wonderful job of getting back to me really fast, and that's not going to happen, apparently, wonderful. And between the Planning Commission, I'd like to thank the Planning Commissioners who voted for the urgency ordinance, because had they not, I think it would be worse. But I would like to see, consider at least through this process of listening to what other cities are doing, because I am really concerned it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other comment? Any other resident? If not, I'm going to close the public comment, I'm going to open the council discussion. Any council want to talk about this? Okay, Councilman Castellano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a topic we've discussed thoroughly before, not an easy one to really figure out, and based on, well, everyone's concerns and everything we've talked about, we should monitor this closely. The state is moving probably a bit too fast, and as Jeff mentioned, seemingly, they didn't really collaborate and communicate with each other. So we, we should keep an eye on this. Thank you.
Any other comment? Go ahead, okay, Councilmember Shoemaker?
I'll just take this opportunity to bring up again, where was our lobbyists? We discussed ADUs at I believe my second meeting, and I said at that point, there were bills pending that would dramatically affect local control when it came to ADUs, and nothing from our lobbyists at that point, and this is what's happened. Every, there were five out of six bills, and there's still another one that's a, it's a two-year bill right now, that pertains to ADUs. So if we're going to continue to pay a lobbyist to not inform us, how do I get on payroll? And I agree with Mr. Redholtz and Councilman Castellanos that we need to start contacting other cities. Mayor Wu, maybe one of the groups you're on, COG, can start discussing this, and we're behind the ball, because they're already in effect, but maybe we can get some type of rollback, some type of control back.
Any other council member? Okay, Councilmember Johnson? Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've gone over this and gone over it and gone over it. And there's nothing about it I like at all. And I'm very upset, very disgusted with the way it is. It puts us in a predicament where we can't do anything about it. But I am in the state of the record right now. I can't support this and that. So I will be voting no on it when it comes to it.
Any other council members want to, go ahead?
Mr. Sho, the attorney, can you please clarify why this is an urgency ordinance?
We need to, and January 1, the, the bills we've been talking about go and take effect. We need to get this in place by January 1st so we still can maintain some local control and be in compliance. And at the same time, we're gonna send it to the Planning Commission to study, and then it'll come back to you for first and second reading. It's an urgency ordinance tonight when we need a fourth-fifth vote from this council.
So to clarify, you said it great. But if we do not pass this tonight, we are going to lose whatever local control is left.
And we'll be, yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'll be subject to the state statutes.
And so whether or not we agree with this, in order to maintain whatever little control we have left, we support it or the state takes control. So this is one of these situations where, welcome to the council. But I want to make very clear that I do not support having to do this ordinance. I do not support the bills that made these ordinances necessary. But I definitely support maintaining the minute amount of local control that was left.
I have a question. Okay, and do we still have the, the, okay, building, the lot size, okay, the minimal ratio 35%? Do we still have control of that?
We do not.
So we cannot even?
Let me be clear, Mayor Wu. We do not have control when it comes to A D U's. When it comes to any other type of development or addition to the House, we do, but not for A D U's.
The, the point is this, right now, our current co-amendment, okay, ordinance, that, that any property size, no matter 6,000 square feet, 5,000 square feet, we cannot build more than 35% of the building. Am I right? So let's, it's supposed to be including any structure, okay, including the, the A D U. There, there should be 35%. Like last time, we, we discussed, if, as long as we have 35%, we, we reduce that density, okay, so we don't have the people build, overbuild, all that kind of thing.
You, you are correct. It's a 35% lot coverage. So from a bird's-eye view, looking down, you can't cover more than 35% of your lot with structures with roof, with a roof on it. And, and there was some discussion about that previously in previous years, about A D U's, well, perhaps you don't need to have minimum lot size because that will cover it. Well, yes, but whoever drafted this, they, they threw that out completely.
So basically, okay, my understanding, okay, is, okay, the A D U, okay, no more than 1,200 square feet. Okay, that's the biggest that stay allowed, okay? And the, 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 the 4, 500 square feet for the junior, but basically the, the most 1,200. 1,200 plus your existing, and that's supposed to be 35% ratio. But now you're saying now the ratio we throw out of the roof? Now we don't even have a lock of the 35% limitation?
That's correct.
So they can build up entire 50%, 70% based on the state current impulse to us?
Well, probably they're not gonna get to 70% because they can only add the maximum 1,200 square, square feet. So they're gonna go, they could go 1,200 square feet over the, the lot coverage. So on a smaller lot, I think, I, I would agree with you. They might be able to get up to around 50%.
Yeah, because West Covina has some lot. I remember when I lived in the 235, I lived back in the, okay, 1989, the lot size is only 6,000 or 6, 6, so 500. So, so they easily to exist the 35% of a lot coverage, okay? So, so meaning your backyard will go to people's property. And but, but again, we still have a, our building code, right? We still have a setback, okay? And so let's still, okay, apply to the building of the A D U. Should be five feet and the, no? Not even, not even, not even, not even that safety, the, the walkway, the five-feet setback?
Well, yes, not, not five feet. The, the state in their wisdom decided that four feet was enough. So it's four feet.
Four feet? So, so people can build four feet? How about the two-story? How about can we restrict people to build two-story? Like what Jerry said, she doesn't want people?
Yeah, so I, I, and I spoke with Jerry, she, uh...
But I'm not only Jerry, I'm talking about for a lot of, okay?
For everyone. So as, as, my understanding, and I think the way it's drafted right now, it doesn't change our second-story standards. So we don't allow second-story in the rear yard setback up to 25 feet. We don't allow second-stories in the front setback up to 30. We don't allow second-stories in the side setback up to 10. So they couldn't have a second story unless they're outside of those buffers.
So we still have a con, some control?
We have control over that, yes.
We still have a control can go to the Planning Commission, okay? For them to commission it to review how they're in true for people's, okay, neighbors backyard.
Second stories will require an administrative use permit and go through a process.
Because my understanding, the A D U can build a two-story too.
You could build an A D U for a two-story A D U, but the, the, the state law didn't require us to approve those. They didn't mandate that, so we still have control over that.
So we can, we can decline the two-story, so only one-story, okay, for the A D U?
We could. We, I think we might wanna be careful if we decline a two-story that we don't do it because it's an A D U, but we do it because of other reasons.
So right now, we basically have no control at all because sound like we cannot setback for five feet, 10 feet. Okay, the, at least the backyard setback, okay? And now how about the between the unit before we say, what, 6 feet or 25 feet?
Yeah, the, yeah, the state...
I think they go to five feet or something.
Yeah, this is bewildering to me. But, but the state did put in a standard that you have to have a 10-foot separation between the house and the A D U. What's bewildering about that is why they want more distance between the house and the A D U than the A D U on, than the neighboring property?
Neighbor, yeah, than only four, four feet.
But that's their wisdom, so we'll, we'll follow it.
Okay, so, okay, council, any other question? So basically, tonight, we have no choice. Try to, at least try to, okay, can, get some minimum control to city. If we don't approve them, we will lose everything. So now we can get a little bit stuff.
That's exactly right.
Okay, okay. And other, any other council? Sorry, Herb. Okay, nothing we can do. Okay, so anyway, and let's go to the, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion to approve. Would you have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, you have a very sad face, a second. Okay, so you have a second with protest. Okay, so we have a first and second. Okay, roll call, please.
Prior to that roll call, I'd just like to make note that the city did, in fact, receive official opposition comments from the Californians for Homeownership Association, specifically their counsel through Matthew Galafond. And again, I would like to go ahead and use this opportunity to read that ordinance into the record. That being ordinance 2464, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California. Amending sections, oh, my apologies, we're moving to the next one. Sorry about that. Ordinance 2465, an urgency ordinance of the West Covina City Council to authorize accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units consistent with state law requiring, requirements by amending portions of Chapter 26 of the municipal code. Moving forward, we have a motion by Councilman Castellanos and a second by Councilmember Shoemaker. Moving forward with the vote, we'll go for Councilmember Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, approve for one. And let's go to the mayor council members' report, okay? Any council member have A B 1234, the conference and meeting, want to report it? If none, then we're moving to, to 11 for Mother May I from, okay, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this up for Mother May I because on our film industry, you know, we do get a lot of revenue off permits when we do this. And I, what I would like to see is, is we could change it for mainly for the industrial manufacturing area like that, to change the permit. Right now, I think they'd only do it like five a year or something like that. And there's some, like, for example, I would say over by the Chevy dealer, they have a lot of, they can do a lot more advertising over permits over there if we allow them to. But right now, they can only do, only a couple of years. So I'd like to bring that back to me, discuss it, where maybe you can up the, unlimited on the, on the industrial area only. That had nothing to do with the residential area.
Any objection? If none, okay, then we go to the Mother May I, please. Investigate and research and bring back to the council to discuss.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have any other Mother May I? If none, I have, you have one Mother May I? Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to start off by thanking our city staff and our city manager for successfully completing a Mother May I I had earlier this year. That's our LEDs. Thank you for that.
Good job.
So many positive comments all the time. Another thing I'd like to thank city staff on is my Mother May I to remove our newspaper stands. That's already looking better. But I'd like to make one more request is for us to research, can we remove the old payphones? Those are still...
Who's there for old payphones?
Yeah. Pretty ugly. They're nice, or...
Really?
So if we could look into that, that, that would be my request. Please.
Okay, any other Mother May I? If none, I'm, I have a Mother May I. Okay, I want this, okay, city to research and report regarding the homeless initiative. Okay, I think we have a homeless issue. And I discussed with a lot of charity group and a lot of resource. I think we need to consolidate the city resource as a hub, okay? And we can kind of put all the different agency and resource together, including the church, including the mental health, nonprofit. I talked to them, they willing to help. So we need to consolidate, okay, put it together as a task, okay? And I know one, okay, and the program is very successful, it's from county, and they have a member join task with our sheriff, with our police, and I think the council member, okay, and with the, the social worker, okay, and with our, okay, West Covina P.D. And we sweep, okay, all the encampment and to help, to provide service and to help them to off the street. Not, not just vacate them, but try to help them to off the street into the different service, and very successful. I think I got a report from the police department. We, we, we helped almost 20 homeless people to find service. Unfortunately, okay, this, this program, okay, only did it two times in three years from county, and I asked county to continue their, they refused because they say they don't have a budget. I, I, I don't know why. They took out $9 million, but they don't have budget. So I think we should do it ourselves. We just consolidate our resource with our co-enforcement staff, with our backup by our law enforcement, and with all this, okay, charity group and the resource that combine together, okay? Let's try to help and sweep all this encampment to help those homeless. I think that is what we need to do to before this epidemic homeless issue barriers. So this Mother May, Mother May I, do we have any objection for that? Okay, so anyway, this Mother May I, please, research, see we can get a homeless initiative, and then we can bring back to the council to discuss. And it's all good, then we could implement in 2020 to see we can help all this major issue. Okay, go ahead. Let you, okay, and, okay, okay, Councilmember Shoemaker?
Thank you. I had asked several times about the status of the city applying for Measure W, the Clean Safe Water Program funds. The call for projects' first deadline was December 15th. And for the second year, the deadline is, I believe, July 1st of next year. That's millions of dollars available to the city. And so I would like a report on whether or not we met the deadline for first-year funding and also where we're going to go for the second year to, what programs we're interested? Are we joining other cities' agencies for the funding? Did you, uh, joint projects? Just what we're doing because I don't like the idea that basically millions of dollars are sitting there for us to implement under the Safe Clean Water Program. I mean, our taxpayers are paying the parcel tax for it, so we might as well actually be getting our funds back.
Any objection? It's none? Okay, then we are going to have this Mother May I too. Any other Mother May I, and any other comment? Okay, and, okay, Council, Councilman Johnson, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to let everybody know that today I attended a funeral for a homeless veteran who passed away on the streets. And I do want to make a comment, like I said, that what a tragedy that was. You know, we have a veteran who served our country in Vietnam who died on the streets of homelessness. And it goes back to Mayor Protem. Is he kind of fits in the way he's talking about the homeless? I'm sorry, Mayor. You called her lady. I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. What the mayor said. I said that for 18 months, Mayor Protem. What the mayor said, you know, it's, it's, goes to what he said about his homeless, you know? And I do want to make a comment, what a tragedy that was to have to see a veteran pass away like that. And his parents, his children from Texas did not want to have anything to do with him because he had PTSD. And then, and it was a tragedy. So I do want to make that comment to everybody. I know Glenn Kennedy was there with me. And we went there, and I wanted to, it made me feel really proud to be the, to pay our final respects to this Marine who passed away. And he was, he was, they took him out, uh, Long Island to the National Cemetery, where he was buried with honors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And is, I saw your post, is, I saw Mr. Kennedy's post. I think it's very touching, and I saw a lot of people show up and a lot of stranger weeping, okay, about this person. And that's why I say we need to do something about this homeless initiative, okay? Not just sweep them away. I think we should try to find a way, okay, to, to, to help, okay, and to provide service, and that we can coordinate with all the resource we have. I think we have a lot of resource, okay, with all the charity group and all this. Let's work together to help those people because a lot of people, I think they willing to get help. Okay, so any other comment? Okay, go ahead. Okay, Councilman Castellano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things I'd like to talk about briefly. The first is, I'd like to recognize someone who's not here, but I'd like to give a presentation at our first meeting in, in January. And that's, I received a request, South Hills High School girl softball got a ton of dirt donated, big mounds, but they didn't have any help to, you know, clean it up and have it be the way it needed to be. So with the help of our city manager, Mr. Carmini, and Mike Cressup, I also reached out to the South Hills principal and Dick Sheehan. Long story short, the person who came through, Mr. Cam Saylor from the Dukes, who also owns Buckboard Barbecue and Pizza Chalet. He came through with a couple of guys. I'd like to invite Mr. Cam Saylor and the guys he brought in to get it done. I'm sure South Hills Girl Softball's thrilled. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention. And the second thing is our Christmas parade. I'd like to thank city staff and Kiwanis for a wonderful event, much bigger than last year. Great time, had a blast, great weather, great crowd. So thank everyone who was involved with that. And other than that, have a safe holiday season. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to say anything? Go ahead, Johnson.
If I had one little correction, if I don't mind, the, the council member, because the weather was, it wasn't great. It was drizzling. Besides, I, I do agree. I do agree. It was a fantastic parade.
It felt more winter-like than it normally does in California.
It was, it was a great parade and...
And I want to follow, okay, all the council member talk about, the parade is magnificent, okay? And I see, I saw so many happy children, okay?